Yay.
It's happening.
How did you know Allison?
Because it popped up, said, "Meeting is now streaming live on YouTube."
It does, yeah, it says that for me, too.
Oh, me, too.
We're live.
Cable channel.
Yay.
It's happening.
How did you know Allison?
Because it said, "Meeting is now streaming live on YouTube." Now we got a...
Me, too.
Now we have a... We should mute.
Okay. Is... Are we on the cable, Audra?
You should be, theoretically.
All right. Let's begin. I'd like to... Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to address the agenda for the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting of May 19th, 2020. First item in the agenda is public input on any non-agend items. Janice, have we received any comment, public comments, non-agend items? You're muted.
No, we have not.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed then with our various reports, and I'd like to start this one off. And with Audra, if you would, address the topic of the day, or the week of the year, which is our forthcoming plans for the pandemic in terms of both the town operations plan as well as other elements the town is involved in regarding the COVID-19. Would you take the lead on that, please?
Certainly. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen so everyone can see. This is the plan that I sent to the Select Board, and town staff have had input into this as well. So this is an internal document, but we'll edit it so that we can take information off this and post it on the town's website and Facebook page and send it to the media as well. So this plan is based around sort of staff returning on the first of June, and then a limited sort of opening to the public at this time as well. So the idea will be that the clerk and tax collector's office will be open to the public. The capacity will be serving two customers at a time. We'll have everything set up to be able to facilitate that. Will... If anybody's been in the office recently, you'll see that there's a Plexiglas sort of barrier up in front of one of the stations. So all three stations will have those Plexiglas barriers. We'll mark off the six-foot increments to ensure physical distancing of any customers who come into the office. Entry to the building will only be through that Elm Street entrance. And the idea is that they'll come in through the Elm Street entrance to, which leads straight to the clerk and tax collector's office. They'll do their transaction or their business. And then to exit the building, they'll go through the exit that's by Janice and my area out onto Elm Street so that we won't have a lot of people sort of having to cross paths close by. So there'll only be, you know, two people in that area at a time. We'll mark out spaces on the street if we would like to wait. We'll still encourage people to do as much business as possible remotely during this time. When it comes to the codes, planning, and development and assessing office, we're going to have that be by appointment only. It's just a pretty tight space, and there's a few of them in there. So the more that we talked it out and the way that that office is set up, the more everybody decided that it would probably be best if, instead of dropping in, somebody sets up an appointment, and that could be for anything. That can be just, you know, asking questions. If somebody wants to, you know, ask a quick question of Jeannie, and they need to, you know, see the screen, or she needs to point something out to them or get papers, they can call up and we'll try our best to accommodate them as quickly as possible. Aside from that, all the other departments, particularly those such as Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Wastewater, where they're currently working in shifts, they'll return to sort of their normal schedules on the first of June as well. So that's sort of the long and short of it. Sorry, I'm having trouble kind of trying to scroll. Okay, here we go. Trying to think of any highlights. Oh, we're going to be requesting that anyone who comes into the town office wear a mask. Staff who are, you know, serving customers or away from their workstations will also be wearing face coverings. We'll be... You know, we have a wonderful custodian, and he's really sort of ramped up the amount of cleaning that he's been doing, and we foresee that sort of continuing and just being very careful to make sure, you know, between customers and transactions, everybody's, you know, wiping down surfaces. We've ordered more sanitizer. We weren't able to get dispensers, but we do have those sort of pump bottles so that we'll be able to have them, you know, readily displayed, and people will be able to use them. We're still... We're still kind of being encouraged not to open restrooms to the public. This is a tricky one. I just... It's so funny. I read a lot about this in a lot of detail. This is kind of something that's flummoxing everyone all over the country as to what you do with public restrooms, both in public buildings as well as, you know, just public restrooms that are sort of out in the community. So I think that's something that we'll need to have a conversation about and talk about, you know, what we want to do with that. I think that, you know, there's some concerns amongst the staff who are supposed to clean them and maintain them. I think that, you know, it would be... We'd certainly have to spend a lot more time doing that if we open them to the public. So those are all things to consider. I would recommend that, you know, there's sort of no change in, you know, the use of public meeting spaces until at least after June 11th, because the state of, you know, emergency has been extended until then. When, you know, we do get to a point where we want to consider... And these are all questions I'd like to put out to the Select Board. When we get to a point where you would like to consider having in-person meetings again, we probably will still be at a point where it's not advisable to have more than 10 people in the space at any given time. So really, those are sort of the high points. I guess, you know, the questions around, you know, the town itself and our business and our functions that I think would be, you know, the Select Board will need to consider are things like, you know, as a group, when are you going to be comfortable resuming sort of your in-person meetings? And maybe moving from, you know, this Zoom-based meetings to meeting in the conference room again? And also, when are you going to be comfortable resuming committee meetings? So those might be... And, you know, you all might collectively decide we're far away from that point, or it might be something you want to start talking about so we can start preparing for it, letting people know and giving them an idea of when a rough date might be. Everybody kind of being very mindful that this is all subject to change as we get more advice or guidance down the road. So that's kind of the internal reopening stuff. If any... Have any questions or comments about that?
Allison. Oh, shit. Oh, crap.
Thanks, Audra. That all sounds fine to me. I also research bathrooms quite a bit. I know that's something that a lot of businesses that are opening are struggling with. I didn't come up with a perfect answer. I do see a lot of people down on the public landing right now, and I see people trying to open the bathrooms a lot. It does seem like, even though it's frustrating not to be able to use them when you, you know, for those emergency situations when you're down there with a seven-year-old, and you've been observing all of the right, you know, we're staying apart from everybody in our own little corner, and then your child needs to use the bathroom. It's frustrating not to be able to use those. But it does... Opening them up does kind of send the message that everything is normal, and it has felt to me like a lot of the people just driving through and coming down and enjoying the public landing, maybe especially those from out of town, might need a reminder that things are not exactly normal. So, yeah, I would... Everything I heard, I was supportive of in that document. But... Oh, shit, what was I gonna say? Oh, I guess with the meetings, I wouldn't... I don't see any good reason to try to move away from Zoom. Not so much because of the danger of us all sitting together. I think that is totally manageable, but it does pretty quickly become an issue with all having lots of other people come, and it's technically... It is complicated to have us all there in person, but then allowing other people to participate virtually. And it seems like what we found is it's either all Zoom or no Zoom is what seems to work the best. I'm just... Is this the right time to ask like any questions about not necessarily the town's reopening plan? But I guess I'm curious what town staff have been hearing the most from residents or from businesses? Or like, what's... What's your general feeling there? What are you hearing most from people? I know what I'm hearing most like from my social circle, but not necessarily what you guys are hearing most. I just be curious. The issues you're facing.
I'll address that question. Where anybody else's staff? I don't know how... The question is about if our staff is hearing any public input. I don't know if they have a lot of interfacials in the email at this point, I'm sure. But any general comments? I do want to get to the next topic.
So that's kind of the... This part of it. So if going away from sort of like internal town property, you know, other things, I guess with Memorial Day weekend and the fact that, you know, some businesses are starting to open up, and it's going to be sort of our first, you know, really nice weekend on what is traditionally the beginning of sort of the, you know, season for us here. We discussed as a, you know, with the department heads and staff a lot today about, you know, how do we want to prepare for this? So I think one of the, you know, the biggest things that we can see, you know, foresee happening within the next few days is a lot of the public open spaces, particularly those on the water, like, you know, 105 Boat Launch, Barrett's Cove, Lake Beach, Shertail Point, being much more heavily used. So we talked about, you know, signage in the parking lots of these parks, as well as in the parks themselves, about physical distancing, you know, masks, all those sort of reminders, as well as increased police patrols, just to make sure that, you know, these spaces aren't getting too overcrowded and just to have a presence kind of reminding people about, you know, groups no larger than 10 and not having, you know, too many people in one space. We were also talking about, you know, the signage in places like the public parking lots, public landing, Opera House, and it's just sort of reminders about physical distancing, face masks, that sort of thing. The state updated their FAQ, so it's actually at a place where it's really useful and really helpful for pretty much anyone if you have questions about face masks. If you're a specific business with a question about reopening, it's gotten to a point where the FAQ is actually really good and really usable. So we've posted a link to that on our website, and I think it's a great resource for businesses, residents, any visitors. So I think that, you know, as well as us, we use it too now because it's at that point where it's got enough information that we can kind of go to it for one source of, you know, what do we do if we get questions about any particular thing? So we've got that, that we're going to make sure that everybody, it's on a prominent place on our website. Another thing, we kind of worked on, you know, a really short, one-page guide around what are our community expectations for visitors, businesses, residents, and what the town is going... You know, what everyone can expect of the town. I've shared that with a few of you, but as soon as I'm done with this, I'll screen share that as well, so you can have a look at that. Also, Jeremy's been doing his best to try and call around to as many businesses as possible, just to try to find out, is there sort of a need or an interest in, you know, anything that the town could do in terms of the public realm and how that can be used in a way that will allow the public to access it in a more safe way? And businesses to be able to, you know, use it in a way that makes opening more practical and safe for them? So, you know, everybody's heard about places like Portland and Rockland. They're closing down certain streets to allow for, you know, safer access by members of the public, and certain businesses can take advantage of the, you know, outdoor space to be able to, you know, serve customers in a manner that's more conducive to physical distancing. You know, I think that from what I've heard, you know, amongst individual conversations with members of the Select Board, you know, if there was a need or an interest in that, I think all of you have been very open to, you know, any sort of ideas that are coming. So we're kind of trying to solicit, you know, any ideas or what's the need amongst, you know, the businesses in town? We certainly don't want to do anything if it isn't going to be advantageous to them. So, you know, we're just trying to figure out what's the interest level? What can we do? We haven't really gotten a lot of, you know, input in that regard, but I think that, you know, everybody's... A lot of the downtown restaurants and merchants are being pretty cautious about reopening. A lot of them were able to reopen today but have chosen not to. So I think that, you know, we'll find out a little bit more within the next few weeks as to what might make it easier or safer. So that's something that we're kind of, you know, looking for, and we'll bring any proposals to you for approval. Because it could be a lot of things. Like you said, it's not just shutting down the streets. Maybe it's, you know, using a public parking lot for some purpose like that. Or, you know, there could be a lot of different things that we could do that could be helpful and make, you know, the town a little bit more vibrant, but in a way that's safe and makes residents feel like, you know, they can go out and still maintain the space that they need to stay healthy. And I guess, you know, we have been getting some questions about, you know, what... Things like violations of the face covering requirements and what are, you know, the police doing and what are we doing? You know, Randy's... Randy can kind of talk to specific instances without using any names, but, you know, there are things that we're constantly kind of following up on or questions that we're answering. So we can kind of send out a little bit of a summary of all that. Also, the Planning and Development Office and Code Enforcement Officer have been doing, quite a bit of work with certain industries, you know. Short-term rentals. Letters were sent out to owners of these, you know, rental units, informing them of, you know, the minimum stay requirements as well as the executive order because there was some concern that perhaps they weren't aware of what was required in regards to the 14-day quarantine. And also, you know, a lot of people are seeing contractors sort of out and about doing work. And so Steve has been working with them to make sure that they're able to, you know, physically distance while they're doing their work and be compliant with CDC guidelines on sanitation and all of that kind of thing. So that's kind of my spiel, but if you have any specific questions of like Randy or Jeremy, they're... That's why they participated in this meeting to answer them.
Yeah, I'll jump.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, reading through the... I know there's been some question recently about, you know, how... About the enforcement of the mandates from the governor. And I think we talked about this several weeks ago when it first came down, that we all sort of knew that. It's a very difficult... They're very difficult mandates to actually enforce. But I did read that last claim there about enforcement of the police department that in the instances that have been reported and responded to by officers, that simply speaking with the parties involved seemed to remedy whatever the complaint was. So I'm just curious if Chief Gagnon could comment on that a little more. And my thought is bringing that up to really encourage people that that may be feeling a little bit nervous about more businesses opening up and, you know, if there's more talk of seeing people with face masks, without face masks, but they're supposed to be to remind them that the best thing you can do if you're really concerned about a certain situation is to contact the police department, and they can continue to follow up and keep track of what's going on. Otherwise, it's really difficult for us to have any kind of tracing on what are just anecdotal things about what might be issues of people not following mandates? And I just think it's important that people continue to contact the police when they have issues. I'm just curious, Randy, if there's anything else besides what was noted in there about your instances where you had complaints that were followed up on?
Well, I can tell you the mask thing is kind of tricky. There are those that are exempt from wearing masks if you have a breathing issue, medical issue, someone who couldn't remove a mask themselves. So those people that you see out there that don't have a mask may fall under the exemptions.
Sure.
Every instance that we have had, we have not had anybody that has, you know, they might have expressed their frustration with the governor's orders, but everybody has basic voluntary compliance, and that is what we're looking for. You know, these are very trying times. We're trying to be understanding. We want to give everybody the benefit of the doubt. Some people don't read the governor's orders. They hear what they hear on the news or whatever. We're not receiving a lot of complaints as far as violations, but we do ask that people not take the law into their own hands. Call us. Our dispatch center is open 24 hours a day. You can call 236-3030 and file a complaint if you'd like. We will follow up on those complaints. Matters that people come across, I've seen some on Facebook myself where people are confronting people, probably is not the best way to handle that. By all means, call us, and we will be happy to address those issues. The 14-day quarantine is another one that we've received some calls on. Very hard to follow up on those. Some of it is, well, so-and-so told me that these people showed up and, you know... So we... Case by case, but we're not even getting a lot of those. You know, we're willing to look into any potential violations. Right now, unless it is extended, we've got two dates. One of the 31st for the masks, the other would be June 12th. One is the governor's order, the other is a proclamation. So I think we'll all find out sooner or later that when the date is going to be that the mask requirement will be withdrawn or it could be extended. So I anticipate we're going to hear that coming up shortly, probably within, if not this week, next week. You know, we carry copies of the orders with us. Give those to people that may be in violation. When we've had instances with businesses, I've contacted management of at least one, and I had an officer speak to management of another place today. The results have been positive. We've had a good exchange. We've asked them that if they look at their operation and find that they may be in violation of the governor's orders, that they take whatever measures they need to come into compliance. And so far, you know, we've had very good success with that.
Thanks, Randy. Any other questions? Yeah, Allison.
Um, I think what a lot of people struggle with is figuring out the appropriate way to contact the police department, and maybe that's just, you know, echoing one more time that it is okay to call dispatch. It doesn't feel... It feels really wrong. Even like, even though I've heard that, like, when I see things that I'm like...
Trust me, my phone, my Facebook Messenger have probably received more information than dispatch has, and people exactly feel that way. Well, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I just want to let you know. So I do have quite a network out there. Most everybody has my cell phone number. I'm not going to give that out tonight, but I get a lot of calls that way. And a lot of it is answering questions, but our dispatch center is at the Knox County Regional Communication Center. The phone number is 236-3030 or 594-5656. They will take your calls, your complaints, and they will assign an officer to those. And we welcome anybody that has any questions or concerns to call us. It doesn't hurt to look into it, and maybe we can educate somebody and get them to come into voluntary compliance. And that's what the goal is here. We don't want to see anybody summons to court, but that's a last resort if somebody refuses to follow those orders by the governor. They are lawful orders, and, you know, we are compelled to make sure that people are following them.
And Randy, this... Go ahead. This is Jenna. I just have a question about what that kind of enforcement would look like. Would it be an enforced... I mean, walking up to them and saying, "Here's the proclamation"? Would there be some... How is that tracked? I mean...
Well, I mean, it all depends on what the violation is. I mean, if it's... Let's say, there's a group of 12 people hanging out together. You know, we're gonna... If we got that complaint, we would go up, talk with them, let them know that, you know, that is a potential violation of the governor's orders. You know, you can't have more than 10 people in a group. Social distancing is also mandated. And that's how we've been handling these. And like I have said, we've had no ill response to it. People understand. People are creatures of habit, you know. I'm sure that this weekend, being Memorial Day, we're going to have some instances where there are going to be more than 10 people together. Are we out there looking for that? Well, you know, when our public beach is in place like that, yes. If somebody's having a private barbecue at their house and there's 40 people there and somebody calls, of course, we'll have to look into that. But again, we would use education first, try to get the voluntary compliance, and we would go from there. Now, if somebody flat-out refuses to comply with that order, then we would most likely issue a summons at that point. I don't think we're going to get to that point.
Okay. Any other questions on Audra's package she just presented on either the town or the town actions?
I just want to say that I would... I appreciate having more town staff here tonight just to be able to ask questions. I think one of the biggest things that has been lost during this time is the ability to just, you know, go into the town office and stop and just say, "Hey, what about this?" Or "What about that?" to chat. And so now, most of my information comes just exactly like the general public, which is I learn what I learn at Select Board meetings and in the pocket ahead of time. And so it's nice just to... It's nice just to hear a little bit about what's going on and the level of thinking. So thank you to all of you, Holly, Jeremy, Beth, Randy, for being here tonight.
Thanks, Allison. And Audra, I want to thank you and the staff for putting all this together. Everybody has to recognize that we're, you know, everybody knows we're in a very challenging situation. And more to the point, it's changing on a daily, weekly basis. It's changing very rapidly. We're trying to get clarification. So everything, we said this now for about three Select Board meetings or four even. We're getting changes all the time. And to Randy's point, we're expecting more changes coming back. We've got to be a little fluid in understanding, and we'll be discussing this at the next board meeting also, I guarantee. With that, I'd like to... Yes, Jeremy.
I have one... Yeah. Thanks, Audra and Randy. I think you guys summarized all that very well. I have one question or comment about Planning Board and Zoning Board meetings. We do have a zoning board appeal application that has been submitted that we received. So we're going to have to schedule a ZBA meeting. And I, you know, it's not possible to do this via in the conference room. So I think we're going to try to move forward with that application, working with the applicant via Zoom meeting. I think that's our only option at this point because there's some... There's some timing issues. I just wanted to share that with you.
No, it's probably a good idea. And to that point, we will be discussing Zoom, not Zoom. But I kind of agree with what Allison said way earlier on about, you know, we're... Do we do Zoom and not Zoom? And just jumping into the conference room at this point is not going to solve a lot of problems or issues. We're really in a critical transition phase. We just started last Monday and yesterday with some limited relaxation. We haven't even felt the effects of that that much, except for global. And a lot of businesses to that end are not opening, are not doing a thing. Uh, that much except for uh, global. And a lot of businesses, a lot of businesses to that end are not opening, are not doing a thing as. As one of you mentioned earlier on, offices are not open. So we're going to, we're going to know a lot more. Let's just take it a few weeks at a time is my suggestion. Um, Allison.
Sorry, I just to follow up on the planning board and, and ZBA, um. I would just hope that we could still follow the public, um, that, you know, if there are going to be meetings over Zoom, that it's done in the same way that select board meetings are. Um, and that also, so I, I, I real, I hate sounding like a broken record, but when I've. If I'm finding it impossible to follow what the planning board, and I know they haven't been meeting, but the planning board and ZBA even um. All of two thousand twenty, I still don't see a s- a single agenda or. Information or minutes or anything on the website. The ZBA has nothing since two thousand twelve. I think it's really important that we, anything that they do, information is able to get out to the public ahead of time.
Yeah.
And after as well, so um.
I hear you. All those, all those agendas and minutes are done. So I thought they were up on there. They were at some point. So I'll have to follow up on that. Those have all been completed, just so you know.
But what about the ZBA? I mean, all, I don't see anything after two thousand twelve.
Yeah, um, I thought those were done as well. Honestly, Allison, I'll follow up with you tomorrow on that, okay?
Okay. And then also for future stuff too, I think the, following the select word protocol, um. Janice just does it. Oh, you know, everything Janice does, it all out in the packet and all of that, if really try to follow that for the plan. ZBA too.
I'm going to look to Janice to make this happen uh, along with me. Going to need a, you know, a manager on this thing. So. Um, we'll make sure we do it that same way.
Thanks Jeremy. Thanks very much. I want to select board reports. Uh, was Taylor, do you have anything you want to report on?
Um, yeah, sure. Uh, non COVID related. It happened a few weeks ago that I don't think we had a chance to mention. Um, because we've been so busy, but um, the Rotary Club um, gave a five thousand dollar grant to the fire department. For smoke detector installation for those in need. Um, so that um, is five thousand dollars on specifically for Camden residents. Who's smoke detectors might need to be replaced. Uh, maybe you can't afford to replace your smoke detectors right now. Um, um, having some kind of hardship. Anything like that, contact the fire department. They will um, install smoke detectors for you free of charge. Um, I certainly don't want anybody going without working with inoperable smoke detectors because you can't afford to um, pay for them. So a big thank you to the Rotary Club for. That uh, important grant. And again, any issues with that, contact the fire department and they'll make sure you're taken care of.
Thanks, thanks. Anything else, Joe?
That's it for tonight.
Hey, Jenna?
Um, am I unmuted? Sorry. I think so. Yeah. I, Audra, are you going to discuss the document that we talked about earlier?
I was going to and I forgot about it, so.
I would defer to you to discuss that document if possible. Otherwise, um, I think that's much more powerful than me just kind of. Ringing the bell about the concerns about COVID again would be the action plan. Um, and I would be happy to cede my time to you for, for that if possible.
I'll screen share uh, one more time. Sorry, guys. This will be the last time I.
Just because this is more of a public address and I think it's important for people to hear. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I, after speaking with um, particularly uh, Jenna, Allison and Bob, because I think. I, it's probably similar with Mark and Taylor, but um, Jenna, Allison, Bob had been expressing um, that there were sort of a lot of concerns about um. You know, reopening and you know, what's sort of what, what's the town's response to this going to be and how are we going to work with? The business community and sort of balance their, their interests with, you know, residents who kind of heard a point where they um. They're, you know, concerned about things opening too quickly and, and the public health impacts of that. So. Um, after kind of talking it through with, with uh, department heads, um. You know, we sort of, and looking at sort of what other places have done and you know, the different kind of groups that we need to be thinking about. Um, we, we wrote up this keep Camden healthy document. It's like one page, pretty simple, you know, community expectations about if you're a visitor. You know, you're welcome here, but there's some expectations of what you're going to do or what you've done. So, you know, um. And this just kind of goes through it. So visitors, we welcome you. Um, but we expect that you're going to keep us healthy and safe by making sure that you're quarantining for fourteen days. If you've just come to Maine from out of state, practice physical distancing, you know, all, all that. Um, requirement that we've talked about before. They'll wear face coverings and you know, if you've been exposed, you're going to stay home for businesses. Um, we're going to commit to assist them and safely opening to the public with the expectation that they're going to adhere to. The um, state's prevention checklist for their industry and also, you know, they're going to do their part to ensure that their customers are following rules around. Physical distancing and wearing face coverings where appropriate. Um, for residents, it's, it's kind of similar to visitors. Um, and also, you know, there, if, if we're going to expect this of our visitors, businesses and residents, um, they can expect from. The town that we're going to do things like provide signage in public open spaces to remind people about rules. Um, that the police department will investigate, you know, alleged in violation, alleged violations and um. Also help with gaining voluntary compliance through, you know, education and um. You know, if there's sort of egregious violations, they'll follow up with um, enforcement. And also, you know, what we talked about before, um, being open to the idea of sort of adjusting the public realm when possible and practical so that. You know, businesses can safely operate and the public um, feels safe when they're out in uh, public settings. So just like really simple um, information that, you know, we want to post where we can and um. You know, just, just make it known that these are kind of the expectations of the community as far as what all these different groups will be doing, including the town.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Jenna.
Didn't, Audra, didn't you mention signage on Thursday, you thought Thursday for signage or the distribution of this?
Yeah, so we're, we're coming up with signage now for um, you know, the, the public parks as well as parking lots. Um, just talking about the, the basic things like physical distancing and some guidelines around when face coverings are expected to be worn. Um, so the, you know, these are kind of temporary signs. We're hoping to do something like a little bit more, um, you know, a little bit. Nicer, I guess. Um, and a little bit more long term. Um, so we're hoping to put those up. Uh, in preparation for Friday because I think Friday is, it's going to be a really nice day. So I think we can.
Yeah.
Out and about and using parks and stuff like that.
Thanks, Audra. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Um, let's see, let me, Mark?
Hi Bob. Hi everyone. Um, I've got a, I'm going to take a minute because I spent most of the day making some notes about. Uh, how I feel about all that's going on and thoughts about it. Um, and I sort of dived into learning some more about the virus itself. And um, how, how that affects how I feel and, and why it's so important to take care of ourselves. Uh, first off, before I get to that. I have to say, I think opening the public restrooms in the landing is actually very important. Because most people, if we have people out and about in towns, most people get a chance to use restrooms in restaurants. Um, and they're for the most part not open and not available. Also mini marts and they've pretty much closed their restrooms. Um, there are no restrooms for public passing through, coming to town. And if we're looking to take care of the business in any extent, most businesses don't have public restrooms. There is no other place for people to, to use. And when hand washing is such an important part of the process. Um, I think we, it's to our advantage to give people somewhere where they can facilitate a restroom. And I don't know where else you can. You know, can you afford to come to Camden, drive a couple hours to Camden, come here and never have any access to any restroom? I think it's important, you know, I think we can figure out how to clean and take advantage of it, but I think that's an important thing. I also think that. It's probably time that we could open up Zoom meetings to some of the commit town committees. Um, they can meet by Zoom. I don't believe that anybody should be meeting in person yet, including us for, for the time until we see more of what's happening. Um, move on to the Opera House. Um, we're now talking about doing some, some thoughts about doing some digital shows from the Opera House stage. Uh, which would be some really nice things for people that are starting to get a little stir crazy, could use a little local entertainment. So more about that as that develops. Um, but in talking, I actually made, typed out a big report about uh, what I've learned and I'm going to go through some of the highlights. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Um, first off, um, everybody here understands the, the five of us on the select board, the town manager, planning director, police chief, or fire chief. All the town employees or state representative, Vicky Duder, who's constantly communicating about what's happening at the state level. And let me add the governor know that a huge part of Maine's economy is built on the tour tourist dollar. And that's especially important for Camden. We've never forgotten that from day one. But the, the question is how do we open? When do we open? How to bring people to Maine safely? And most importantly for me, one thing I think about more than probably anything else is how do we restore people's jobs? Because that's really one of the serious problems is the loss of income for so many people. And Maine is not a state where people have huge banks of bank accounts and huge savings. A lot of people live paycheck to paycheck. This is a really difficult time. Um, so, but I'm going to talk about some of the things that are unique about. I was an EMT for twenty years. Um, so I wanted to learn more about the virus because everybody says, well, it's sort of like the flu. It's not like the flu at all. Uh, some of the things here, a couple of reports, report from March twentieth that I read. New research suggests that the higher number of infections per coronavirus patient may be related to the frequency of pre symptomatic transmission. When people have been infected, they're not yet showing symptoms, but in fact could be contagious. Um, and that's the really important thing and the difficult thing about COVID nineteen. People can pass it when they don't know that they're sick. Uh, conversely, by contrast, flu is most contagious in the three or four days after symptoms begin. So when you understand the difference between the two, you start to understand the problem. A report from April twentieth. Um, their hospitals are finding out that patients without respiratory complaints have COVID pneumonia. For some reason. Um, pneumonia is showing up, but not affecting the breathing of the patients until it's so critical that they're actually close to death. They don't know that they have the disease. And that's been a serious problem. Um. The next situation, another report, April twenty second, um, they're discovering that one of the things that's happening that this is that it's a. Uh, let me get to this. Um. A, a large portion of COVID patients admitted to New York State's largest health system came in with a blood test readings that indicated clotting problems. Um, what they found is that the COVID virus, unlike some things that affect just the lungs, is affecting blood clotting throughout the body. And that's causing a lot of major, major problems. Um, thirty eight percent of hundred and eighty four COVID nineteen patients in intensive care unit had blood that clotted abnormally. Um, and this is the thing that sort of wrapped it together. This is from a uh, a, a discussion with Dr. Larry Brilliant. Um, that I heard on May tenth on the podcast. Larry Brilliant was part of the World Health Organization team that eradicated smallpox. And is chairman of the Board of Ending Pandemics. I'm going to read what he said. This disease is terrible. This disease is unique. We are fighting with a virus that does things that no virus that we have encountered does before does. And I'm pretty anxious, I'm pretty cautious about making that comparison. We call it a respiratory disease and that makes you think immediately, immediately of influenza. This disease is nothing like influenza, other than that it is spread among other ways respiratorily. If this is a respiratory disease, it's more like smallpox. Which is spread by respiration, but affects every single cell in your body. This disease affects people with illness. That is literally nose to toes. You lose your sense of smell and you get COVID toes, which is like frostbite. But it also affects your kidneys, affects your liver, affects your heart in dangerous ways, affects your lungs in tragic and poignant ways. But it also affects at least two, we think cranial nerves or the senses of those nerves causing a lace, a, a loss of taste and conjunctivitis in your eyes. Um, we don't really know what's going on. It certainly creates micro embolisms or clots all over the body. This is not a simple respiratory disease like influenza. And even the death rate is grossly underestimated. Um, learning the science of the disease is why we have to take it seriously. Um, last week Jeremy mentioned and that he and I were on the, the cabbage, the Camden area business group uh, connect over coffee call. Um, the week before and we were asked by one of the business people, would the select board be willing to write a letter to the governor about. Opening up, but making it easier to open. And I said, we certainly would discuss it. Um, but I, in thinking about that comment, I realized that the governor knows how important opening is. Like I said before, we're a tourist oriented economy. Um, and that's really important. Um, and I think that there's some key things we need to concentrate on and I feel very strongly about this. That we've mostly covered and the town is doing in August's report, what the town people are doing. Um, the report that Randy's talking about, the governor's orders on April thirtieth, it said, starting Friday. Everyone in Maine who enters a public place for physical distancing is difficult to maintain will be required to wear a cloth based mask. Or covering to help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen, the disease caused by the coronavirus. And one of the things about masks um, that people may not understand is if you, if you're in a hospital situation, you're wearing. Uh, and you have to protect yourself from patients that are exhibiting a lot of signs of the uh, COVID nineteen. You wear an N ninety five mask, you wear face shields, you wear body coverings. Um, but most of the masks that we're wearing are not of, of that standard. And they're not made so much to protect you from the virus that's out there. They're made to protect other people. What they do is prevent if you have the virus. If you're not symptomatic yet, it, it keeps protects other people from you infecting them. That's the importance of the masks. Um, and I think, uh, and I understand that some people can't wear masks. Uh, but my recommendation for opening up the economy is, is pretty simple. We do our best to stop the virus from spreading. Opening is much easier. Masks, hand washing, social distancing and testing. Um, and one of the things I've seen, so the comments that I've gotten through social media and talking to people is that. Most people are not willing to go to a place where the staff is not wearing masks and where the, the people, the customers are not wearing masks. Um, if we want to help our economy, um, wearing masks, doing all this stuff is so important and it makes such a big difference. Um, and I think it's, I'm never going to, I'm personally never going to tell anyone to wear or not wear masks. Personal decision. Um, and obviously I don't know if people have medical situations where they're not, they can't wear a mask. But in order to return our economy to where it needs to be, you know, being conscious of your ability to impact other people and being. Aware and um, personally responsible for the other people in your town, in our society. It's important to wear a mask. And take every precaution that you can. Um, I think we are incredibly fortunate to be one of the safest towns and counties in the whole country. We have fewer cases of this than just about anywhere and I'd like to keep it that way. And I know that we are, we're interested in our summer visitors. Um, and one of the problems we have is we're adjacent to two states. Massachusetts and New York that have the two of the worst um, situations of the coronavirus anywhere in the country. And we need to work with those people coming in to make sure that they do, they quarantine, they, they take care, they do masks, they do everything like that. I have to make one comment about an example of how education is so important. Uh, I had a friend that commented that. Um, she was in a parking lot, I think it may have been Hannaford, and somebody got out of a car with New York plates. And they had a conversation and they weren't wearing a mask and they said, well, we just arrived here from New York. And my friend asked, did you, uh, are you. Have you quarantined yourself? And the person said, no, I don't have to because I've had a house here for twenty nine years. And it's such a level of misunderstanding about the problem. It, it's just, it's shocking to me. Um, so education and care for your fellow person is what's really important. So that's my speech about the virus and where I feel about it. We can't cure this. We need to pay attention and take care of our fellow person. That's probably the longest I've ever spoken.
Allison, do you want to add any select board report information?
I, I do. Thank you. Um.
I I do. Thank you. Um, so, uh, Mark, that was a perfect lead in to um, the main thing that I wanted to talk about, which is the Midcoast Pop-Up PPE Factory, um, which is run by Michael Mullins and a large um, or medium sized group of great volunteers. Um, I've been fortunate enough to uh, be working at a hundred Mount Batty Street for uh, over a little over a year now. That's where we have our um, Syria sort medical supply sorting location and where we send our shipping containers out of. And it's this really wonderful flexible space that has the DIY garage and which is a subscription access for mechanics or aspiring mechanics to do work on their cars and um, but Michael, when this began to happen with coronavirus and the shortage of masks, he immediately thought, okay, well, hold on, can't we, we have this sort of warehouse space, um, which is not very uh, we don't have a lot of that in Camden. And so he was using that for some um, vehicle storage and he transformed it into a volunteer um, mask production facility and he has a really kind of advanced operation. They have a laser cutter there and really strict protocols in terms of the hand sanitizing and of course, wearing masks when you enter and um, I'm sure there's more that I'm not saying, but this week, um, especially because as we're seeing this big increase and the number of businesses opening, there's a huge demand for masks. And I've been asked to try to help get the word out a little bit about the need for volunteers. Especially volunteers with some sewing experience. I'm going to be there tomorrow from one to four. Um, they have groups of people there daily that can train you. Um, there's also a system where you can take out a kit that they'll give you and you can do all the mask making at home. Since this began, they have made approximately forty-five hundred masks to be distributed um, at very low costs. Um, it's really mostly a donation program. But it's, it's pretty awesome to see what what's happening there. They have some um, Pearl Benjamin is has taken a really active role in it. She wrote something uh, in her column of a week or so ago. But if anybody is able to help, especially this week, they're really trying to make masks available to businesses. You could, I don't know if anybody's seen like at McGonagall Market, there's uh, a a mask donation. You know, you can put money in and take a mask and it's sort of donate what you can and they're seeing a huge increase in the in the requests for this. So uh, Midcoast pop up, hold on, let me look at this real quick. Um, if you're if you can help, they have a Facebook page, you can look up Midcoast Pop-Up PPE Factory or um, can email midcoastpopupfactory@gmail.com. Or if you have trouble with any of those things, feel free to contact me and I can put you in touch. Um, the next thing is uh, to remind everybody, it is not too late to do the twenty twenty census and it's really important, um, especially for municipalities that everybody does that. Um, people say Camden's population is shrinking and aging and all these things, and maybe it is, but I'm convinced it's not as bad as um, has been portrayed in the past. I know that ten years ago I didn't do the census. It just never got around to it. Um, I've kind of felt a little bit guilty ever since. So um, I think a lot of people probably aren't being counted and just really try to encourage. I'd love to put something up in the town office windows or something, just a big final census push. Tomorrow is the start of recycling again. Um, some recycling, some increased recycling at the transfer station. You can find on the Micro Solid Waste website a detailed list of what's going to be accepted. But um, as of now, it'll just be Wednesdays and Thursdays. Um, and they are going to be limiting the number of people that can be in that recycling area at any given time, but you'll be able to now bring newspapers and magazines, still continuing being able to bring corrugated cardboard. That can happen on any day. Number two, uh, both colored and the natural non-colored plastic, um, scrap metal still on every day. Am I missing anything? Tin cans, um, tin and aluminum cans. So still, please find somewhere else to take your um, returnables for the time being. The, it looks like the Legion Hall is still on Pearl Street is still has their donation box open and then also the Simonton Community seven corner Community Hall is another good place. Um, but try, everybody, you know, try to try to be patient with the with the opening um, and know that if you do, if you do want to just go and get rid of your trash on Wednesdays and Thursdays, you may also have to contend with a lot of people having their first chance to recycle um, in a while. And we'll continue to look at increases in the number of materials accepted. Just on a, on a happy note, lots of activity in the harbor, the A O Is and blueback herring and um, smelts are visible. Last night I finally um, documented a seal underwater um, that came right up into the little cove on the public landing. So lots of, lots of exciting stuff down there and it's a great place just to go at night, especially if you're looking for something. When there's not many, there aren't many people out there at all and you just want to go on a, on a walk and take a flashlight and shine it down um, into the harbor. It's, it's pretty exciting. So, thanks.
Thank you, Allison. Um, just a couple of things. One, um, it seems industrial grade audit continues even today. Um, there's various specialists coming in, looking at building envelope, uh, HVAC, uh, lighting and those things to uh, fill in the blanks for the library, public safety, public works, town opera house, um, snowball. I think I got them all. I say public works. Anyway, uh, they're, they're still formulating the uh, informations they could put together are uh, a decision matrix, which will again will logically probably arrive in about July. That's what probably all covered tonight. Um, with that, uh, unless there are any comments, I'll move on to um, the approval of the board minutes for two meetings, uh, one, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, and the second one, May fifth, two thousand twenty.
Bob?
Yes, Jeremy.
I have one, um, one, one little discussion item that I was going to maybe include with Audrey's little report before you move on, if you don't mind. Um, this has to do with the post office projects. I don't know if um, people are aware. There's a small project that's proposed at the post office. I know it's a um, a historic building and the town has some ordinances that um, apply in this case. Um, and I I just due to everything with COVID and the the process with the post office. Um, I just wanted to fill the select board in uh, where things are with this project. This is a there's the proposal um, small elevator on the rear of the building. And then um, a, a new door egress code, life safety code required door coming out on the north side of that building to a new stair system that would go from Chestnut Street all the way down to Bayview and the post office is going to pay for that. I know that's something that it works for a long time. People have really desired in Camden and it is coming, we are going to get that. Um, but I wanted to share that with you. There are some ordinance requirements that would normally apply, but since this is a federal project and it's a specifically a post office the post office and their designers do not have to consider or contemplate complying with any local zoning regulations. Um, they're doing their best they can. This project is getting reviewed by the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. Um, I have shared the designs with the Camden's Historic Resources Committee. Um, they have provided me comments. They understand that their ability of to say, to have any sway on this project is there isn't any. They understand that, but they wanted me to share the comments with the um, consultant in the post office. I have done that. Um, there is a planning board. There's an interesting ref- um, review that the planning board would technically do on a project in this zone when it comes to exterior facade changes. Um, in this instance, it were, when that ordinance applies, actually any review that the planning board does is non-binding and the applicant would not have to comply with any decisions the planning board made. But I just wanted to share this with you all. Um, it is a unique project and and our ordinances. You know, the post office doesn't need to comply. There's the federal supremacy clause. Um, and there's a lot of post office litigation on zoning and land use requirements. I just wanted to share that with the um, board. I know that, guys know that that's kind of moving forward. Um, and the Historic Resource Committee again has given me comments as has um, a couple of planning board members.
I think Jeremy, one thing you might do with the next select board meeting in the packet, which should include some information with their select so to be able to see what these uh, changes are because they should see visually what's happening, uh, at least on the on a um, elevation slash floor plan basis. Describe them, but I think they should see what the um, what the stairway from Chestnut down to uh, Bayview looks like. What the, where this elevator is being, uh, it's on the Bayview side of the building is being added. Elevators in the current elevator. And there are also some internal changes like bathrooms and a few other things that they're changing internally, but it would be good to bring that to the, the next select board members will include in the packet.
That's fine. We can do that. I just wanted to let you know that we, we really don't have any review. Tell them whether or not.
Very typical of a federal project, Allison.
Thank you for that. Um, because I, somebody said something to me, I forgot about it and I had no idea what they were talking about and um, I've been meaning to ask about it, but had forgotten. So thanks. Um, I'm confused about which ordinance is it that would normally apply to changes in that district?
Okay, so really quick, um, article, it's article twelve, section um, one eight, and these are where site plan review would apply, right by the planning board. Um, and this or proposed changes to in a five-year period. If you're in the B one, B T H or B T R, if facade, roof, siding, awnings or any ar- historic or architectural details. Um, that is a site plan review requirement um, to go to the board, I will say, but if you go to the review criteria, it gives you these standards, but then it says that um, the applicant is strongly encouraged to adhere to these standards. However, the planning board um, decision is non-binding on that applicant. So it's really kind of a cursory advisory review. Um, and the applicant, why actually?
Thank you. I do really believe that there's a lot of value in that the, these types of processes, even when they're non-binding. So
I, I get that challenge has been, um, this all came in right during this COVID um, crisis and you know, they're, they're trying to get their project in their queue um, for, you know, later this summer, I believe, to um, put that elevator on the backside building would be to the left of the loading docks.
Right. And that's fine. That's, but that's, it's, you're doing the right thing. That's where your role is that they for some reason you know about the project, so they care a little bit. Um, and then you're, it, it doesn't need to necessarily be the not a lot of people find out about these plant, you know, ZBA planning board hearings anyway. So just putting some information on the website and telling the relevant committees, I think is very helpful. So thank you.
Let's move on to um, again to the board minutes for April twenty, May fifth of two thousand twenty. Are there any comments on those uh, meeting minutes or do I hear a motion?
Oh, hold on, sorry.
Take your time.
I need to pull that.
Take your time.
Uh, is that the?
Either one, April twenty-fifth was the budget meeting on Saturday. Yeah, the first one and May fifth was the last select board meeting.
Okay, so one, the budget meeting, I just noticed um, something that I said about the um, I made a comment about the admin, the salaries for the uh, school employees and shoot, um, I need to pull it up, but it was not in, I don't, it was, the way it was um, I just wouldn't want that to be. It's, it's not right, it's not quite right. And I didn't, I don't think that's the way I said it, but um, they're contemplating a zero percent increase for, you know, certain categories of of employees and all uh, admin is, is, um, they've foregone their wage increases. Um, sorry, my computer is not wanting to open this loading, so I can't find the exact language, but um.
Allison, is it the paragraph that says it's um, McKeller strongly disagreed with a three percent raise stating three percent is not consistent CPI and social security benefits are based on the CPA. She strongly believes the cost of living increase for town employees should include use indicators such as CPA, uh, CPI. She said the
All of that was a little bit off, just actually because I, I just, it should be based on a, on a, on a real indicator or a pair to something. Um, I don't know that it's true that the social security is exactly tagged to CPI. There are any number of things that we could tag it to, but that's what I don't care about as much. It's more, I just didn't want to misstate something for the
Allison, you just say your words are, or the words here say um, the local school district are proposing no salary increase. And when I'm hearing you saying it was saying what you really said was the local school districts are contemplating the salary, no salary increase in their upcoming budget. Is that what you're saying?
For, for, for non-association employees and for
Right.
I don't know how to say that really quickly without it. It might just be better to take it out. Um, because that's not I, I just don't want that to be miss.
Okay. You want the entire sentence taken out, including social security one point five six, or just the part about the school?
I think just the part about the school. The other part may not be totally accurate either, but I just don't want to be blamed.
That's fine. She said, she said the cost of laying increase for social security last year was one point five six percent. Period. The rest of the sentence should be deleted.
Sure. And you can, everybody can check the video if they really want to know.
Any other changes, Mark?
Uh, Bob, I have no other changes, uh, but I'll make a motion that we okay, the select board minutes for four twenty-five and five five uh, with those uh, changes as dictated.
Second.
Comments from anybody? Discussion, Jenna, did you have something?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay, roll call vote, Allison.
I.
Jenna.
I.
Mark.
I.
Taylor.
Hi.
And Bob, I five zero. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to um, consideration uh, confirmation of a, of uh, Ms. Kristen Smith for uh, trustee of the Camden Public Library.
I would make a motion that we approve Kristen Smith um, and add her as a Camden Public Library trustee.
Second.
Discussion.
She's a great choice. I was so excited to see her name.
Glad to hear it. Roll call, uh, vote, Allison.
I. I.
Yeah.
I.
Miller.
Hi.
Bob, five zero. Thank you very much. Um, fifth item approval to change the employer contrib- contribution rate for emperors from ten point one percent to ten point eight percent of gross wages for the town of Camden full-time firefighters beginning on July first, two thousand twenty.
Packet about that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Um, Jody did up a like a little memo and I must have forgotten to send it to Janice. So my apologies for that. And I can, I can give you some background. Um, and we might have some extra time if you all want to think about it because you're just hearing about it now. Um, since that background memo didn't make it in. Um, so really this is a benefit that's offered to um, public safety employees. So our police department currently uh, receives this benefit. So for um, you know, all other town of Camden employees, they receive, I believe it's a nine percent employer contribution. Or sorry, it's the ten point one, isn't it, Jody? And um, public sa- and the police department is receiving the ten point eight percent. Uh, however, that's a benefit that's allowed of fire departments, and it's pretty consistent that most um fire departments, you know, receive the um the sort of increased employer contribution. Um, so it just makes it so that we're, you know, kind of consistent with other fire departments in the state. Um, it's really going to have pretty minimal budgetary impact. We're talking about, you know, two thousand dollars, which can be absorbed by the current operating budget and even um, you know, the what we have budgeted in FY twenty one um under that proposed budget that's yet to be passed at town meeting. So, you know, it's pretty minimal, given that we've got um, you know, four career firefighters. Um, so that's kind of the the gist of it and why we're asking for that.
Mark.
Um, I'm willing to make a motion uh that we change the employer contribution rate for uh emperors from ten point one percent to ten point eight percent of gross wages for the town of Camden full-time firefighters beginning July first, two thousand twenty. Hearing what Audra said, knowing that this is a particularly uh difficult time and complex time for them, I I see no reason not to to move forward with that.
Do we have a second? Then we can discuss it.
Yeah, second, uh, some discussion.
Who's today? They said something I didn't hear a second.
Taylor did and Jenna did.
Okay, thank you. Now discussion. If anyone wants to discuss it, Allison.
It sounds like something I can easily support, but I I really have no idea what that means. Um, and I that's an area where I'm a little weak in terms of benefits and contributions to this or that. I actually don't know what you mean when you say contribution. I don't know contribution to what. Um, so I just don't personally feel if it's not a time critical thing, if it could wait until next time, I would prefer to be able to read it and and just to under I just hate voting on things that I don't understand, and it seems like it might take a little while for me to understand it right now.
Yep, and we can we can easily sort of give you like the um, you know, the brochure, the summary of it, and I can I'll explain it a little right now so that when you do get that, it makes a little more sense. So main main purse is the main public employee retirement system. Um, so, you know, when you become a full-time employee of the town of Camden, you get a choice of retirement plans that you can pick from, and the town contributes a certain percentage to uh each one, depending on the one that you pick. Uh, the majority of town employees are on the main purse system. There are some that choose to be part of the ICMA system, and the town contributes uh ten point one percent for the majority of employees, um, with the exception of the public safety employees get the ten point eight percent. And ICMA, I believe, Jody, is it seven percent?
I believe it's five percent.
Five percent. So that's, you know, the employees have to contribute to their retirement, and the town provides a matching or they they provide, you know, we provide the either ten point one, ten point eight, or ICMA five percent. So um, that's kind of the background to it, but we can give you sort of the brochure that explains the program, the rates and all.
Okay.
I'm fully unfair to our other employees, but I don't know.
Mark, one last comment, then I'll say make a suggestion.
Well, what I was gonna say, if if uh Audrey has more information, I would take down my uh my proposal, my uh and and release it, and if if there's no time crunch, we could do it the next meeting.
I I was going to suggest we table this motion and revisit it on June second, which I believe is our next select board meeting, because procedurally we should put stuff in the packet for us to chew on before a decision.
Just to confirm, we would still have time if they voted mom the first June meeting?
I think it's June second, Audra, I believe.
Yeah, this would be for effective July first. Um, we would need to get um, it's signed and back up to main purse first.
Yep, okay, great.
Okay, just table the motion and we'll readdress it on June second, if you don't, if everybody agrees. Uh, that said, we will go on to the item six, which is the designation of registrar voters' office hours for the upcoming July fourteenth, two thousand twenty annual town meeting, which basically means they'll be designated as regular office hours. Is that correct, Audra?
Yes.
And if there's no objection, like to hear a motion to uh approve general regular office hours for the register registrar voters for their election.
So moved.
That makes it easier. Second.
Okay, uh, discussion, roll call vote, Allison.
I.
Jenna.
I.
Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Bob, also five zero. Thank you very much. Item seven, the confirmation of Peter Gross as election warder warden for the state primary referendum election to be held on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
I motion that we confirm Peter Gross as the election warden for the state primary and referendum election to be held on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Allison.
I.
Jenna.
I.
Bob, I five zero. Item eight, the long list of the following vitrinal license renewals for Abigail's Inn, Camden Cone, Camden Harbor Inn, Camden Hideaway Inn, Free Street Inn, Grand Harbor Inn, Harbor Dogs, Hartstone Inn, Longgrain, Lord Camden Inn, Norm Vega, Rumline, River Ducks Ice Cream, Swan House, and Waterfront Restaurant.
I'll make.
I would. I'll let Mark.
No, Jenna, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve uh the renewal of the following vitrinals licenses. Uh, Abigail's Inn, Camden Cone, Camden Harbor Inn, uh Camden Hideaway Inn, Free Street Inn, Grand Harbor Inn, Harbor Dogs, Hartstone Inn, Longgrain, Lord Camden Inn, Norm Vega, Rumline, River Ducks Ice Cream, Swan House, and the Waterfront Restaurant.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Allison.
I.
Jenna.
I.
Mark.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
And Bob, I also five zero nine. Approval of the following lodge establishment license renewals, and I'm not going to read them all. You can read them during the motion if you so intend to do so.
I'll make a motion that we uh approve the application, approve the lodging establishment licenses for the following uh companies, Camden Harbor Inn, Camden Hideaway Inn, Free Street Inn, Grand Harbor Inn, Hartstone Inn, Lord Camden Inn, Norm Vega, and the Swan House.
Discussion.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Uh, roll call vote, Jenna.
Uh, I.
Allison.
I.
Mark.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Bob, I five zero. Item ten, the approval of the select board countersigning the annual meeting warrant for the five-town community school district budget referendum and MSAD twenty eight budget referendum.
So I move that.
Taylor, go ahead.
No, no.
It looks like we'll have some discussion, but I'll I'll do it so they can do that. Um, I move that we approve the counter signature of the annual meeting warrant for the five-town community school district budget referendum and MSAD twenty eight budget referendum.
Second.
Discussion. Allison.
I just want to say I spent um a couple of weeks ago, spent some time on the school district website looking for information on their budget. And I was blown away by their presentation. It it the document management system, the you can you can go on there for both both the districts, and it's a little they've done a really good job with their websites, basically, and combining them, but then having them separate for different schools as much as possible. And um it was really easy for me to find links to all of the meetings where the school board discussed this, um links to PowerPoint presentations, links to video presentations of um them explaining the budget. It was I I mean, shooting for the stars in terms of a communication um outreach, you know, effort. So I would encourage everybody just to look a little bit. It's nice to see examples of other um boards that are doing things in ways that work. I used to go on the school websites and school board websites and and get a little bit frustrated, um similar to maybe how some people feel about us. Um, and they've made a just a gargantuan effort. They've also, I'm sure anybody who has kids in the school district right now, um sometimes it's actually a little too much. I don't think the town, people probably wouldn't ever want to get that much communication from the town as you're we're getting from the schools, but it's um, it's pretty darn good in terms of opportunity for public input. We get surveys. Um, and you're not everybody gets a chance to respond to them, but I think the people that that want to can. And um, I think it's a nice model to see if we could maybe copy just a little bit more of what they're um doing. I've I mean, just it's been a tremendous effort. So I definitely support, you know, the countersigning the warrant and all that stuff. They're also keeping their um operating budget very much um in check. I think it's a right of less than a two percent um increase. It's, of course, we have we're paying for the pools and all the new buildings and all of that stuff. But um, it's really well explained and um encourage everybody to take a look at it, get a chance.
Well, thank you for that. We'll take a look at it. Um, with that said, any any further discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Allison.
I.
Jenna.
I.
Bob, I also five zero.
Also, because normally we would have, what we didn't do this year, we would have Maria come and
Yes.
and give a presentation, and the 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 budget committee should have heard that too, and um, you know, I mentioned something earlier, but I'm sure I'm sure Maria would have been fine to join one of our Zoom meetings, but um in the absence of that, there is are, you know, a really robust information topic, because some people I know wait for the presentation that she makes to the select board is kind of like, oh, how do they learn about it a little bit? But there's definitely a substitute for that this year, so.
Yeah, it's been a little different procedure this year. I still would like to hear the presentation personally, but um with that said, um, we've approved this um this item ten. Item eleven is public hearings for seven licenses, liquor licenses that have been submitted for uh prior to, what did it say? Prior to three? No, that's comments. Um, obviously, the purpose of a public hearing typically is to for the select board to get to solicit public input on any of the applications uh that are in the packet. Obviously, with the current situation, I'm not going to read all of the rules and regulations. Janice, I presume we haven't received any public comments on any of these seven packages. Is that correct? Janice.
She's muted. I don't know if that's why.
Yes, you're all set.
Okay, thank you very much. I I I would suggest therefore, um, I want to ask the select board if any any one of us has any questions on a specific application. If we don't, we can do them as a block. Does anybody have any questions on any of the applications that were in the packet? Do we should vote? Okay, not hearing any, then I suggest the motion should be um the motion to approve these uh seven items, and uh we should read them out.
I'll move. Oh, now you want somebody to read them out.
Um, it it at least read out the names of the of the entities, please.
Looks like Taylor's up for it.
Okay, go.
Uh, all right, so as proposed, uh, I move that we approve uh the following liquor licenses listed on the agenda as items uh A through G, those being an application for schooner explorations doing business to schooner Apple Door at eighteen Baby Landing for renewal of a class one public service liquor license. Um, item B, application of Beretta LLC doing this as Camden Harbor Inn at eighty-three Baby Street for a renewal of a hotel class one liquor license in addition to twenty hotel room minibars. Item C, application for of Norm Vega at sixty-three High Street for a renewable class one hotel class one liquor license. Item D, application of Corey Hill Business as Anderson Inn at thirty Community Drive for renewal class one restaurant liquor license. Item E, application at Rumline at One Way Fair Drive for renewal of a class one restaurant liquor license. And item F, application of Sea Dog Brew Pub Camden at One Main Street for renewal of a class eleven restaurant lounge liquor license. And item G, application of Oscar Verest in businesses Camden Harbor and at eighty-three Baby Street for a special amusement permit.
I didn't know Corey Hill had a restaurant. That's not open to the public, is it?
I don't think so.
I will second that.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Now get to your question, Allison. I don't believe it's open to the public.
I Corey Hill is one of my favorite places in town. It's
It is cool.
Great, a nice atmosphere.
Well, any of these.
That must be the bingo night bar.
No, it's not. It's not just like the people at Corey Hill. It's not just older people. It's not just the stereotypical bingo thing. It feels more like a college campus in a lot of ways.
I agree with you. Um, hearing uh any discuss further discussion on these seven? Not hearing anything. Roll call vote, Mark. Taylor.
Hi.
Allison.
I, and by college campus, I didn't mean it like it's crazy.
I got it. Good catch. Jenna.
I.
And Bob, I also five zero in the seven liquor licenses. Thank you very much. And since there's no adjourned item, we on the agenda, we can't adjourn. So we're going to spend the rest of the night talking about fun things.
Oh, 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 can I just?
You may.
Sorry, not on the agenda, but in the packet, um, the there's all this finance stuff.
Oh.
Um, maybe I would I would love either Bob or Audra.
Yes.
Are there things that we should be
Yes.
noticing or not?
Yes, well, from my and Jody will kick me on.
Jody, I forgot that Jody. I'm sorry, Jody. Jody definitely.
That's okay.
The layman's look at it from my perspective was um from the town's perspective, Jody, please correct anything I say that's incorrect, but from the from the expense side, the we're it's ten months through our twelve-month budget, correct?
That's correct, yes.
The packet, uh, the expense side looks quite well managed. Um, in fact, um doing better than I would have expected, but more importantly, the revenue side is also while it shows that the revenue collected to date or taken in to date is lower than the overall bogey. Um, realistically, Jody, to me, that's because we haven't tapped into surplus. The nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars has not been tapped into yet.
Which is really just basically a journal entry. It just kind of shows that we are using that to balance the budget. Um, but we're basically, we're doing okay with our revenues. It's really great to see that our residents um in light of all that's happening and that we're not able to open the doors to customers, they're using our online services. We made almost fourteen thousand dollars in the month of April for auto excise, just for online auto regis. Um, we're gonna, I think we're gonna, we're gonna be slammed when we open in June for those that are choosing to wait because of the the um the governor's rule of the thirty-day expiration, you know, leniency or whatnot, but um the boat excise money is coming in. So, yeah, our online services have really helped out with um keeping the cash flow up. Um, so, yeah, no, we're looking okay.
Yeah, I would say very, very okay, actually. Um, but do you expect to tap into that surplus in this fiscal year?
Cash flow wise, I I don't think I don't think we will. No, we, um, our tax collection is healthy for the April payment. Um, and I think I've I've mentioned before that we do have probably sixty to sixty-five percent of our property taxpayers uh choose to have their taxes escrowed. So those checks do come in from the bank. We can depend on those.
Well, we did discuss this during the discussion on April twenty fifth, we discussed about both FY twenty one, we were putting in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the discussion went around the fact that we weren't using the surplus from FY twenty uh and and not all of it, and that so you're actually, this reinforces that statement that was made on April twenty fifth.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Now, that was the the again, the window of the world from thirty thousand foot, like on on the town on the other package. On the other package that was in there was, uh, the snowball. I think there are a couple of things to discuss. One now and probably one, I would anticipate in June, Audra and, and Beth, I know she's out there somewhere, that we would probably look at the snowball budget for next year in, in the month of June sometime in a select board meeting. I think it's appropriate to attack it then, um, as far as next year goes. Um, but I did, the, the charts that Jody put in, uh, showed us what the snowball was, you know, month to month. And we're showing, uh, about sixty-six thousand dollar loss, um, through the last month recorded. And turns out, uh, per her note, that there is outstanding about thirty thousand dollars worth of receivables we haven't received yet, which would bring, if those receivables are collected, will bring it, uh, the loss for the year in the order of thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. Not that far off from what's being, been projected. However, I would, if from my perspective, I get very concerned when I see large receivables outstanding in this environment. And I think that, uh, Audra, I would strongly recommend that whatever has to be done to push on those receivables, we shouldn't be holding back. Because I, I fear there could be some bad receivables that could be hanging out there because of the current situation with the pandemic. Um, there are businesses, tremendous, it could be a problem. Um, I know this is a very, I'd like to encourage, I'd like to encourage a, a push on collecting those receivables. Beth, you mute.
Sorry about that. Um, so I had, I sent a few, Allison had had a couple of calls, um, out. We have the ski club contribution that they always do a grant with us. And that's going to be about twenty thousand dollars, um, coming in to pay for different things that they pay for, for safety. Um, uh, fourth grade, learn to ski and, um, for other things on the mountain. And then we also, I had also asked the foundation for ten, ten thousand five hundred, give or take, for a polecat, um, snowmaking machine that we want to purchase, which will have a life about twenty years. We were renting it and to purchase it outright, that's what the cost is. So we'll be having that come in. Um, and then there are some groups that just never, you know, paid their final bills. And that's probably about five thousand dollars more. So we're gonna rebuild them. I'm sorry?
In my hearing, did you not, not stop any claims with those collections?
I know, they're all going to be good for it. They all, um, I have a meeting with the foundation tomorrow night. Um, and the ski club, uh, president Natasha, uh, said she's just waiting on a, a final vote and she's going to cut the check. So we'll see those come in before July first.
Um, and, and that's good, that's good news. Um, yeah, we got one of the conference, we're getting, we don't want to get to the, uh, you know, select board meeting. We're getting feedback back some of it, it might be-
Yeah, I think maybe it's, uh, me.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you. You can, that's better. Uh, uh, it's just, uh, I'm sorry, um, Taylor, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I had a, uh, comment about, um, for Jody about finances. Did you want that? You, I was having trouble hearing. Do you want to talk about snowball still or can I jump into that?
Let's just finish the snowball and go back to, uh, anything, anything, anybody else wants to discuss. Um, just in the snowball, um, as we looked at the year this year, and again, this is for discussion later, Beth, not tonight. But when we look at, um, budget for next year, what I continue to see is we're having to repair a lot of things. Uh, there's a lot of line items that are maintenance or repair that is, you know, not hugely in the red, but, you know, a lot of reds. And what that tells me is we, it later, we should have a discussion about, are we really playing enough money aside for maintaining the snowball? And, and don't expect the answer tonight. Let's think about it between now and when we go in. You know, we, Beth, you know, I've had this discussion a number of times, I think, parks and rec thing, like, no way do I believe there's enough money in there for repairing all of, we should be repairing on parks. I think we might be having the same thing in the snowball and we should at least have a discussion about it i- in June. But, uh, that was my only comment there. Um, uh, now, any other comments on the financials that were in the packet? Uh, Taylor, did you have one?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna, just in general, if we could, um, Jody, if everybody agrees, if we could get, I don't know, maybe a monthly sort of update on this. And, you know, I think particularly for, for revenues. I think when we were looking at the budget, specifically for revenues, a lot of it, like vehicle excise taxes kind of, you know, our best, our best sort of assumption on what may come. Um, so I think it would be just helpful in terms of knowing if we're far behind or, or how far, far behind we might be um, along the line. It's helpful to kind of keep track of it. Um, if we could do this on a semi-regular basis, I think that would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. I, I was getting into the groove of doing this monthly and then it sort of became every other month, but I definitely can do this every month for you guys. Yeah, it's, it's an indicator. And like you said, I, I go directly to the auto excise when I, when I print out these reports because that's, it's, that's the heartbeat of these revenues outside of property taxes, in my opinion. So obviously it's one of the largest, uh, revenue makers. So, yep.
Thank you. Other comments on financials? No, good. Um, that said, now we can, we can, uh, we can consider an adjournment, um, of the select board meeting of May nineteenth already.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn this select board meeting for this evening.
Second.
Motion made, the seconded discussion, uh, roll call vote, Taylor.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Bob also five zero, of course, and thank you all so much. It was a very productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.